Tell we about with me, please. I do most gracious, Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this another day that you've given us. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given us. Dear Lord, we pray that you will be with us during this meeting for that we would make the right judgments and the right decisions for our school systems. We want to thank our teachers for our safe return from our fall break and all of our safe bus drivers for all the safety that we've had. And dear Lord, if we want to continue to watch over and care for all of us, dear Lord, we pray that you'll just go with us now, watch over us and care for us, and we'll be careful to give you all their praise in thy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we want to introduce our student ambassadors and thanks for your patience, too. We have Carly Freeman, so I know who's who, and Leila Cooley. So, thank you for attending and come and see what happens at the board meeting here. All right, so do we have any public comment? No kidding, so there are no public comments. We have, oh, wait a minute, we need to go back to our recognition of Daniel Ray, so I always jump ahead on that, so I'm a little discombobulated here.
As a brother, I would love to just come up here, shrug my shoulders, and just say, here is your recognition, and say thank you and hope that you trip on your way up here. But as an employee of the Coffee County School System, and two, wanting to add a little bit more time to Mr. Dame Wood's hourly stipend, I want to take this moment to thank the board for allowing the small window of time for us to come and to celebrate and to pay our respects to an officer and a leader in this community. As we, as the Coffee County School District, represent my brother and best friend, Daniel Ray, for his outstanding dedication and service to our community and to our school system. I also want to say this, 17 years ago, you butchered a best man's speech at my wedding, fighting back the tears, and I want to say, this is how you deliver a very simple speech and move on. Daniel, you have been a wonderful role model for our students and an exceptional teacher in helping us stay prepared for school safety in emergency situations. Your leadership and commitment to providing thorough safety training has without a doubt strengthened our schools and our staff. And even in times of tragedy, Daniel, you have been a steady and compassionate presence, offering support and guidance when it is needed the most. As a strong liaison between law enforcement and our schools, Daniel, you have built lasting partnerships that have made our district safer for everyone. Today, I speak on behalf of all of my peers throughout all this district when I say that you will truly be missed, and I wish, and we wish you all the best in your upcoming adventure. Thank you, Daniel Ray.
Thank you. Y'all for being around.
Stay for the picture. Smile.
So, I couldn't, you got, I don't even know what to say. So, thank you so much for this. The teachers, the students are amazing, and I definitely didn't do this by myself or do this. The SROs standing in the back of the room are the, are the real heroes in this. Those guys done amazing, and there's no way that I could have done these things without them as well, so I'm, I'm super proud to have been a small part of their team. You guys are amazing. Thank you guys for helping me out.
Who taught you when you started?
So, thank you guys so much. I don't know what to say, except for thank you. You guys have no idea how much.
It's more pictures.
Thank you for your service. All right, we now have call for order. We have no public comment, and we have the principals' reports, and we got quite a few tonight, so, so where's that microphone? Who wants to start?
Welcome back from fall break. We had a great first day when everybody came back rested, and we got quite a few things that have happened and are going to happen in the month of October. We had, on September 26th, we had picnic on the grounds, and we had about over 100 people come and enjoy a lunch. We had a beautiful day, thank goodness, and we got to enjoy lunch with families. I loved that day. Our kindergarten went on a field trip to Cedarwood Pumpkin Patch, that's always a favorite. The bus drivers love us when the kids get on the bus with big pumpkins. October 17th, we are having our citizenship celebration for those students who have 95 or above, they get rewarded for their excellent citizenship. We got quite a few students who are going to participate in that. October 18th is our first elementary basketball game. We play College Street at 10 o'clock, so if anybody wants to come out and see the season opener games. The 21st is our first quarter academic pep rally to celebrate those students who have excellent academics and citizenship. Our trunk or treat is scheduled for October 23rd at 5:30 to 6:30 in the side parking lot at the, where the buses enter, and we, that's a big event as well, too. That's one of my favorites. On October 24th, the 4th grade is going to the Hermitage, and the 5th grade is going to the Carter House, and on the 27th, the 3rd grade is going to Old Stone Fort using our local park. And we have Halloween parties on the 30th, and also Ms. McCartney, Ms. Mary McCartney, our music teacher, has been chosen to present at the TMEA conference this spring, so I'm really proud of her for that. She's going to present on her ukulele club and how she teaches the students to go from knowing nothing to being able to play the ukulele within weeks, so I'm really excited for her to, the opportunity, and proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
So, at Hickerson, this Friday is our Fall Festival. From 5:30 to 7:00 will be games and dinner, and then the silent, not silent auction, the live auction starts at 7:00. This Saturday, we'll also play our first basketball game against East Coffee at 2:00 PM, and then Thursday, October 30th, we will have a Halloween parade starting at 1:30, and it's where the kids will get in their costumes, and they will trick or treat throughout the building. That way, if they don't get to trick or treat that night, they still have that experience at the school level. So, you're more than welcome to come out and see all their costumes and, and, you know, see the excitement and all that good thing. That's, and that's what we've got going on at Hickerson.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, so I apologize that Eric can't be here. He has experienced some deaths in the family, and so, you know, second in command here. So, in September, when we ended the quarter, our students got to shop in what we call our Monster Marketplace, where they use their positive behavior points through Class Dojo, and they get to shop in the store that our PTO sponsors, and so lots of kids, I know my own, had lots of good goodies, slime, and all the things parents don't want to come home with them. On Friday, we have our virtual awards, so we adopted virtual awards during COVID, and we still do it. Eric and I go on a cart with an iPad and music, and we visit every class, and every class is on our, their TVs, and so it saves time not meeting in the gym, but it's still a very fun experience with everyone getting to see each other on the TV. The kids love that because they get to experience themselves there, and so that's Friday at 1:15. We have a basketball game against Hickerson at 2:00 on Saturday. Our Fall Festival is October the 24th at, from 5:00 to 8:00. We'll have food trucks, games, and hayrides, and then we just wanted to say we appreciate the arts being in our school. Our kids are really learning about the time it takes to do a project and complete that, starting in pre-K and up, and that has just been a wonderful addition to our school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dun, dun, dun.
I'm Bobby Gilli, principal at New Union, no relation to that guy on the end. I don't tell people anyways. I'd just like to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd also like to welcome and introduce to you my assistant principal, Ms. Peggy Mountain. Just want to tell you a few things about what's going on at New Union. We also did a picnic on the playground. We had a little over 280 people attend our picnic on the playground back in September. We also had a book fair during that, during that week, and we brought in over $8,000 to our school for our library. We opened back, our school back up for our parents and grandparents to come in, and it paid off big. We have also started a fundraiser for a new LED sign at New Union, and we've raised a little over $20,000 at this moment, so I'm real proud of that. We will be hosting tomorrow a cross-country meet at New Union. We will also be doing an awards day, First Annual Awards Day. We've not been doing an awards day in several years at New Union, but we're starting that back up, be doing that on the 17th. We will also have basketball games on Saturday, we'll be playing Westwood. We've also planned some things for October, October Safety Month, so we've got some guests, speakers coming in from the Sheriff's Department, from the Fire Department, different areas in our, in our community, and having them come in and talk to our kids. On the 30th, we will have, we'll be having our First Annual Trunk or Treat at New Union. I will also like to brag on some of my staff members. We've had several that have written grants for the Sportsmans and Businessmen's Organization for their grant that they've sent out. I had, I think we had about six submit grants, so I'm really excited to hear back from that. We also are planning a Fall Festival on November the 14th. This will have a live auction and a silent auction as well. Now, this is the next part that I need to present. With your approval, we would like to transition into our new logo. I think this was emailed out to members of the board. With your approval, we would like to continue that transition. And also, the faculty and staff at New Union, we're trying to find a new mascot, something that represents our heritage, represents our community, but also is kid-friendly, and we're New Union Rebels, and what we came up with was the New Union, this is Rebel the Raccoon. So, we've got, many of our staff members have approved this, put in, put in. We've also talked to some of our students about it, but with your approval, this is something that we would like to transition to as well. So, I don't know how that works from here, but.
Do we need to have board approval to change the mascot?
Yes, and the logo, that's what I read in the policy, so.
I guess we'll have to look at that.
So, that'll come back in the November meeting, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson.
So, I wanted to take a minute and do something a little bit different tonight, kind of just highlight Coffee County Middle School, and highlight the efforts that we have put in, the work we have put in, and the progress that we have seen. So, I want to highlight our staff first and foremost, because for anything to really be successful, you got to have people on board, and you got to have people that's bought in and willing to do what needs to be done. So, what I've given you is a sheet that I shared with my staff back in July, and these are test scores, but you can see what's in red are scores that, as a principal, I inherited when I first went to middle school versus the scores that you have in that gray box that we were able to achieve this school year. And so, just to brag on my folks, I'm going to read some numbers out for everybody that's, that's listening at home and those that are here in the audience. So, 6th grade ELA in the last four years has increased over 12%. Math in 6th grade has increased over 17%. Science is 6%, and social studies is over 10% increase in scores. For 7th grade, over 10% increase in ELA. 22% increase in math for 7th grade. Almost 21% increase for science, and 12% for social studies. For 8th grade, a 4% increase in ELA, a 21% increase in math, and a 15% increase in science, and over a 10% increase in social studies. These increases have not happened just by happenstance, but it's because of the dedication and the work that our staff is putting in every single day, and it's something that I just wanted to take a minute and just highlight, and to make sure that our community knows the work that Coffee County Middle School staff is putting in. It's easy to get hung up on negative, right, and let that negativity just be the cloud that we're in all the time, but I wanted to make sure that, that you all knew that. So, achievement has been a great increase at middle school, as well as our growth, and you all know, we went from a Level 1 to a Level 4 this year. Again, that increase is because of the staff and the work that they've put in every day, and I just wanted to say, you know, they, they need that highlight, they need to be recognized for that, and I, I certainly appreciate that I'm able to be a part of the team at Coffee County Middle School. So, so anyhow, I just wanted to share that with you, something a little bit different than what I normally share, but I felt like that was something, especially since scores are now not embargoed.
You came in about a year ago and made your presentation to the, to the board on your plan, and I think you had all, already had some things in place, but.
Absolutely.
We're seeing the, really the fruits of, of that here.
Right, absolutely, you know, and it, it all starts with having the right culture in your building, right, and having people bought into the vision and the mission and bought into trying to make a difference, and, and so I think once those puzzle pieces are in place, you can really start seeing things happen and motivation, momentum happen, and, and so that's definitely something that's taking place at middle school, and I'm proud of the folks there and, and the work that they're putting in every day. So, I just wanted to highlight that. Couple of events that are fixing to happen start at middle school. So, tomorrow night, we have our first band and choir concert that'll start at 6 o'clock, so that's, that's exciting. I know that those students work extremely hard, and they've been practicing after school and all those things, so that'll be tomorrow night. We're going to have our second pep rally next Thursday, which is the beginning of our basketball season, and so we're excited about those students and, and being able to start that season up. And then the following week, our wrestling season starts, so plenty to come out and see and do. Raider Fest was the day before fall break. I know Mr. Coon was able to come by, and he saw that in action, and that's a lot of fun, and it's really busy, and the kids have a great time, so.
It looked like they was all having a good time.
Absolutely, yes, yes, so thank you all, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to share on behalf of the high school a few things that are going on this week for us, and our student ambassadors at the appropriate time have some things from the recent past, just prior to the break last week, and then some things that are coming up. But today, we were fortunate to have a gentleman by the name of Fletcher Cleaves, who works for an organization called Choices Matter, speak with our students, sophomore students at the high school on the topic of texting and driving. We had planned this student assembly all the way back in the spring. In fact, they were going to come this past spring, but weather did not permit, and so we rescheduled, and so Mr. Cleaves came and spoke with our sophomore students today for about 45 minutes. They were so well behaved and really honed in on what he had to share. Mr. Cleaves was a standout athlete in high school who was a victim of a texting and driving accident, and so he had an important message to share, an inspirational message about overcoming, and also, you know, just, just some information about the dangers of texting and driving. Again, our sophomore students were really receptive to that message, so we were glad to have him. Also want to share with you that this Thursday, we have a sort of similar event for our junior students, and there will be an organization, the Children and Parent Resource Group sponsoring an event called Cinema Drive. And Cinema Drive is a 3D interactive activity that our, all of our junior class will participate in in our theater, and it will simulate things such as impaired driving. That would be just an example of what they will experience, so to speak, and so we're excited about being able to provide that opportunity for our junior students. Also want you to be aware, and I think our ambassadors will touch on it a little more, that we have our Fall Renaissance Rally this Friday morning, and we had 655 of our 10th through 12th graders that earned either one or more Renaissance cards based upon their work this last spring. The Renaissance cards are earned based upon achieving all A's for the semester, all A's and B's, possibly having perfect attendance, or possibly maintaining a 4.0 GPA, and so again, 655 of our 10th through 12th graders earned a card, and so we will be doing a fun activity for them with our Renaissance Rally this Friday. We'll spend about 45 minutes, again, just engaged in some fun with them, which I think our ambassadors will speak about a little bit. Finally, I would like to share with you, and I think it's on your consent agenda for tonight, but we would like to start an archery club at the high school. I've had a few requests for this, and I just so happen to have two ladies that are here tonight who are willing to sponsor an archery club at the high school, and if you all were to have questions about the creation of that club, we are prepared, either myself or these ladies, to answer those questions. But we feel like an archery club is an activity that would really just provide an, an important avenue, a niche sort of activity for kids that possibly might not be involved in any other extracurricular activity. I fully believe that some of them would be involved in other school activities, but again, I think that archery is something that some might focus in on. I know that there are local area elementary schools and middle schools that have archery clubs, and so we've got students at the high school, several of them that had participated in their younger age, and we would like to be able to provide that opportunity for them as high schoolers as well. So, again, at the appropriate time, we'd be prepared to answer questions on that. Any questions for me?
Who are your sponsors?
All right, so, well, one of those is Ms. Jocelyn Gilde, who is over here, and she just raised her hand, and the other is Ms. Addison Westmoreland, who is to her right. So, again, these ladies have been involved with archery for quite some time, and we would be very fortunate to have them working with our young people, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parsley. All right, at this time, we are ready to go to our call for intent for the meeting, so we're going to approve the general consent items, the minutes from, from the prior, from the special call meeting and the September 8th meeting. We also need to add one agenda item that's going to go on as item number one, so we'll shift everything else down. We had a recent disciplinary hearing authority meeting and ruling, and we need to make a decision on that, so that will be item number one on the agenda, so you can adjust things accordingly. So, when you approve the consent agenda, you're approving all those things plus the addition of the, the, a new agenda item, so. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so moved.
Mr. Hensert, and who's second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Cordell. All right, any discussion on that? All right, let's start with Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Oh, and I, that is 9-2-0. Okay, item number one is, as I mentioned, we had a recent disciplinary hearing authority with, with a student discipline issue. There was a ruling made by, by the DHA that has been appealed, and obviously, because it involves student discipline, we, we have very limited information we can give out, but what the board needs to do is make a decision today whether we want to, we have really two choices. We need to either agree to take that to, to a hearing and, and hear everything again, or we need to affirm the decision of the, the DHA. So, that's a, that's the decision we have tonight, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gilli.
I move to affirm the DHA decision of the record before us.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Gilli and Mr. Cordell. Okay, is there any discussion on this with keeping in mind, we got to really keep any personal details out of this? Hearing, no discussion. The motion on the floor is to affirm the, the decision of the DHA according to the record, and Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Hinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensert.
No.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
No.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye and Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
All right, so that, seven, or 7 to 2, that passes. So, the decision of the, of the DHA is affirmed, and so our next agenda item is Hickerson Elementary Building Direction, and.
Just a second, Ryan, I'm going to disconnect from you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, for, for being there.
Good night.
Thank you, bye.
That's our stand-in board attorney, so. All right, so our Hickerson Elementary Building Direction, Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Shores, I guess this is.
Mr. Shores will give a historical perspective of Hickerson.
Of the building itself. You want me to go on?
No, we're good.
April's cracking up back there.
I think everybody in the room was.
Hickerson Elementary, the, the main core building was built in approximately 1948, 49, around that area. There was one addition that I know of that was added either in the 70s or the 80s, not positive which one. Then there was a, another addition that was actually added on in 96, and that's basically the, the setup of Hickerson Elementary.
My recommendation on the Hickerson Elementary project would be replacing the current school with a new school building behind its current location. This would provide us some additional classroom spaces, much safer flow of traffic out in front of the school and parking. Also, just the building's organization, we can control some of its uses just by improving that with a new building. The estimated cost of that would be 35 to 40 million dollars, but that's my recommendation.
Would that be a three-section or four-section?
That would be a four-section building. That would be a four-section building.
Okay. That's a director's recommendation, okay?
Yes, sir, for Hickerson, yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Mr. Hansert and Mr. Gilli, any discussion? The motion is to replace Hickerson Elementary with a new four-section school located on the same grounds behind the current building, so discussion.
Is there a possibility of rezoning some of the kids to Hickerson at that new school at that time?
I think that's always an option. It's not an option that is a favorable option all the time when you talk about rezoning and/or consolidating schools, but that, that is, and we'll get through talking about East Coffee, moving, moving students is a possibility. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, have you, have you looked into consideration of a different location in that area with, in the rezoning process? I don't wanna get muddy the waters, 'cause I agree, I think we need new.
I think the property that it's sitting on...
You think that's sufficient?
Behind it, I just, our, our school building's so close to the road, it creates some traffic flow, it just gives us...
Well, how, how much land is there?
It's probably acreage there.
Give me one second.
But...
Eleven point five-three.
Oh, okay, that's good.
And that's, that's, most of that space is to the rear of the building.
I believe that Wold showed us a design for, for a new building on the same ground. I don't remember if it was a four-section that they showed us the design for.
I don't think they actually showed a four-section design for a new building.
Yeah.
If they did, I don't recall it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was a three-section for a new building they showed us.
But they did provide a scenario of the property.
Right.
I thought, and I could be very wrong, I was under the impression that when Wold talked to us about building a new one, that four sections was not feasible, that it wasn't going to fit correctly. Did I make that up? I may have.
I don't recall them saying that it would not.
'Cause I know their plan was for thirty.
I don't recall them saying that, no.
Okay, well, another thing is, as of today, Hickerson has two-hundred-and-sixty-two students enrolled. That's a lot. I don't know that we would need to rezone anybody. It feels like they're just bringing in people all on their own, and they're gonna fill themselves up. It seems that way to me anyways.
Further discussion? All right, this is to provide direction, so this is really what we're taking to the county to ask them to finance. Okay, so, all right, so...
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, so we're talking thirty-five to forty million, but the plan they gave us was, I'm pretty sure, a three-section. So then that's not gonna be an accurate amount we go to the commissioners with, so we're gonna have to have...
Those are approximate numbers.
Yeah, so...
Maybe a tad bit more than that.
I think it would be, so do we need to have a more realistic figure before we go before the commissioners?
The only way you're gonna get that's in a bidding process, and you gotta approve what you wanna do before you can open up the bidding process.
What we're doing is providing direction that we're gonna go to the county and we're gonna talk to them about this and move in that direction, so like Mr. Gilli says, this is an architectural estimate, so the bids are gonna come in and, you know, it could be lower.
Okay.
And that's why I use the word approximately in talking about East Coffee, estimated, I mean, we don't, depends on those, those processes, the bid process.
Okay.
Further questions? All right, Ms. Hinch?
We're, we're going for a new, is what we're voting for.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
I say aye.
The motion is to approve a new four-section school on the existing property.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell? And I will vote aye, that passes eight-two-one. Yep, all right, next up, East Coffee Elementary Building Direction, so kind of the same, go ahead.
Okay, with East Coffee Elementary, it was actually built in sixty-three. Since then, it had an addition in the seventies and as well as addition in the eighties, and then in ninety-six, there was the latest addition that was added to East Coffee. And if you're wondering, but this shouldn't make any difference, but the acreage there since it was asked on the other, but we're not, I don't think we're talking about a new building, is eighteen-point-five acres. And any questions, I can try to answer for you.
My recommendation on East Coffee is to continue to improve, improve the infrastructure by adding a new gym, new cafeteria, office areas, and potential clustering areas, although we're still staying with the two-per-grade structure for approximately eighteen million.
So we'd end up with a three-section school, is that...
No, sir, we're, we're using a, currently in a two-section school, but we're gonna just add the gym, the cafeteria, and the office areas. So that would shift people and provide some additional, hopefully, classroom areas.
Okay, so just being clear, the renovations would, would give us, we'd end up with a two-section school with a new cafeteria, gym, and office area, okay. All right, do I have a motion? Mr. Hansert? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Gilli, seconds. So the motion is for, for renovations at East Coffee to provide a new, new cafeteria, a new gym, and office space, and other miscellaneous renovations. Any discussion?
I have a question. Would that provide them with a music room, and approximately how many more classrooms would that give them?
Depends on the office area.
The, the way that they had the, the design, I believe the music room, they would be designing a music room behind the stage of the gym.
So they would have...
So it would be a stage inside the gym, then behind it is a music room.
And growing. I know they only have one classroom empty at the moment, so classrooms are endless.
In my mind, one of the two, when we, when, the recommendation, I make the recommendation for a new Hickerson, one of the two had to be a new school with more classrooms. We do have the ability to shift students from school. It's not a very favorable approach, but rezoning is a possibility. And I, I mean, as our county grows, we're gonna have to look at that, but, you know, one of the last things we wanna do is, is run out of space here in five or six years. So I, I appreciate your, your comment, Ms. Jennifer.
So is this a scaled-down version of what they showed us, Wold, or is it the same?
From what Mr. Hargrove is sharing, I think it's the same as what they, Wold actually presented to the school board when they did their presentation.
Oh, okay.
I have a question. Where at the moment are the art classes at East Coffee? Where are they being held? Are they...
I couldn't tell you the room number, but it's in one of the classrooms. I could show you where it's at, but I couldn't tell you what the room number is.
The what? The old computer room.
The old computer room.
But is it a dedicated classroom to art class?
It's the only class that's in there. It doesn't have sync, but it, it works.
Okay.
So yes, it's, it's a dedicated art classroom.
Okay, do we have places out there for the school nurses, SROs?
As of right, as of right now, there is a half-classroom that the nurse is in. The SRO is what used to be the paper closet, but that's where his, his office is.
What about a counselor?
She has a full classroom.
Okay.
It's not necessary for her to have a full classroom, but she has a full.
She does, okay. I just wanna make sure everybody has a place.
Ms. Tucker, are y'all full?
We're growing, we're growing. We're thirty more kids than we were last year.
So you're, you're full?
We have a conference room that we can get rid of and make a classroom right now, and our counselor and our speech teacher do not need full classrooms, but they have the availability of full classrooms right now.
So you've got room to grow?
We have some room to grow.
Don't wanna say that, but...
Diplomatic answer.
It's a diplomatic answer, not to put you on the spot, we're just trying, trying to get some answers here.
I would like to see if, you know, I, I think it's wonderful that they're getting a gymnasium like the other, and hopefully Hickerson will have that also. But I, I would like to see these gymnasiums used for some of the elementary games, because we've built them, the community hasn't, doesn't see them unless they have kids there, you know, their own, and hopefully, maybe we can work something out that at least one game or two can be played in those gymnasiums, just to show the community what they paid for.
I think that is a fabulous idea.
I, I wanna go back to something that Mr. Hansert said, and also Ms. Tucker, as far as the school and the, the space that is in the building right now, and such as what she was saying with the counselor's classroom, and I can't remember which other speech classroom, when Wold did the drawings, it actually takes away some of the classrooms and uses them in different ways. Can I give you an example? Is, is the, the library would actually expand. So the library would stay where it's at, but it would actually expand into some other rooms, which would make the library larger than what it is now. So actually saying, right now, and then what it is today compared to if you went with what Wold put it out there as, you're actually taking some classrooms and reusing them in a different method, in a different way. So really the statement of, do you have space to grow? Right now, it might be, but after you change, such as New Union and North Coffee got a whole new library, you might be just taking the library at East Coffee and expanding it and taking over a few more rooms to, to make it a larger library. So you're gonna lose those rooms when you do that, but, so keep those things in mind when, when you're talking about gaining the room that's there compared to what it would be after Wold finished up. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Eric and I liked the Wold presentation with what we're doing right now with our school. We felt comfortable with that presentation.
Well, I have a question. If, what you're recommending, East Coffee will still be a two-section school. It'll be the only two-section school, elementary school that we have. I mean, if we're, I mean, they've seen growth, and it's only gonna continue, I feel pretty positive about. If we're gonna take on this endeavor, why wouldn't we at least make it a three-section school to begin with, and, you know, 'cause then, you know, in five years, we don't have to go back and say, hey, we need to add on to this school again.
Makes total sense. You know, all this is contingent on our neighbors down the street. Exactly, but I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go... You can ask for two brand-new schools, if that's what you deem. Well, I know with the Wold presentation, I don't know if it's on the second one, but on the first one, they had renderings showing, adding extra classrooms in the back for the three-section school.
I agree with what you're saying. It seems silly to me to do construction without making it bigger. It definitely should be the three-section.
Mr. Coon, don't hold me to this. We think it's about a four-million-dollar add-on, so you're looking at twenty, approximately twenty-four, twenty-five million. But if you do...
It's only four million.
But if you do that now, that's four million dollars. If you do it in five years, that's twelve or fifteen million dollars.
I understand, I just wanted you to understand what the add-on numbers were.
Right, yeah, I mean, I know it'll be more, but, I mean, in the long run, it'll be cheaper.
No, I understand, by far. If you look at what our schools cost, what it costs Coffee County School System to build our middle school is astronomically, is double, just about.
Ms. Chair, can we, can we amend the motion to add three-section to that, the plan, the motion to renovate?
The motion is Mr. Hansert's, so, and you seconded it?
I don't have to, no, I didn't, did I?
Oh, you can, oh, you're making a motion to amend?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and we can...
If you can get a second.
Well, you made the second.
No, he didn't.
Okay, are you making a, you're making a motion to amend the motion?
Right, the motion to amend the motion to add three-section to the original motion.
Yeah.
But I have you as second.
Yeah.
That's what I have.
I was on the one before.
You were on this one, second.
Yeah, that's why I got you down, too. However, Mr. Hansert is willing to amend his, his motion, or change his motion.
Well, he can change, yeah, he can change his, if you want to.
Yeah, so, and you wanna go ahead and do that?
All right. So I would like, Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the motion to amend it to a three-section school at East Coffee.
And Mr. Gilli, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record, for our YouTube audience, and postering, so, all right. So the motion now reads is, we want to make it, do renovations to make it a three-section school with new gym and cafeteria, and other, and office space, other minor improvements. So, all right, so further discussion on that, is that...
Now, how many versus, three-sections versus four-sections schools are we, if this were to take place?
I, I couldn't tell you how many. We have four sections to write off.
Two, two, I think.
I couldn't, I couldn't just give you that.
Maybe, okay.
What is North Coffee considered?
I would consider it probably a four-section, but I'm not gonna tell you. I haven't sat down and looked at the number of classrooms available for each grade level.
What about New Union?
I would have to do the same thing. I'm saying the same thing on each one of them. I haven't sat down with each one and looked in for the sections for each school.
What we've also gotta consider is that these aren't the only schools that's gonna need to, we're gonna have to do a high school, because the growth, when we, if we take anything from that study of the growth, it shows that Manchester City is growing quicker than the surrounding areas. Those children feed into Coffee County schools, and our, and it's, I think it's a disservice, again, I said that before, to high school students not to be able to be in the same building.
Yes.
And that's something we're gonna have to look for and look toward in the future of, possibly two high schools, maybe one high school maybe centered around a different type school than another, you know, where people might have a choice to, whether they go one, you know, with CTE or vice versa. Anyway, I'm just brainstorming, but that's something we gotta think about, because if our elementary schools are growing, and we need four-section schools and all that, then the, the high school's already bursting at the seams. And the, it was built on to, to accommodate ninth grade, and then it got so big that the ninth grade was overcrowding everything, so that was moved out. So anyway, that's just something that we need to keep in our minds. And also, too, something else we need to keep in our minds is that the zoning has changed in the county also, so as of now, there's not gonna be a lot of residential developments with multiple houses, and that affects growth in the county. But regardless of that, we're gonna grow.
I think they still will in these two areas that we're looking at, Hickerson and there, because they're technically in what they call a PGA.
Right.
Where ninety percent of the land is on C1 anyways, already, so it's outside of the purview of their A1 Protection Act.
Exactly, I, I agree with that.
Further discussion? Okay, um, so the, the motion on the floor is to approve a renovations at East Coffee Elementary for a three-section school with, uh, new cafeteria, new gym, office space, and other minor resident renovations. Um, let's see, Mr. Hansert.
Hi.
Ms. Jones.
Uh.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Ah.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine-two-zero. Okay, now, next item up is just several, some adjustments on, on committees and Melissa's gonna explain that to us, what we, what we're doing here, right?
Okay, so on this one, right.
Cause you're the ones that color, you're the one that color-coded all this, so we need your interpretation.
So the only thing that we're gonna do is the Anti-Drug Coalition, the Mental Health Committee is going, Jennifer was the only member on that, it's all gonna go under the School Health Advisory. So we're just combining all of those together. And the, uh, other thing on here was, um, the Special Question Committee. That was on there from collaborative conferencing and we'd taken it off and we might just should put two people back on there just so that we know that we have that on there. That was in the collaborative conferencing, which we're not looking at doing that, but let's just go ahead and do it. And then I tried to track where all these committees are coming from. And I think that's it.
I think so, okay.
And Mr. Hargrove was gonna go on, um, the Innovation Committee as a committee advisor on that.
Okay. So.
Just a few changes and we need two people for the special question.
So we need a couple volunteers for the Special Question Committee and it's unlikely to meet, right? But, but because we have the collaborative conferencing agreement now, we may need to have that committee meet, so that's just to do it ahead of time then, so, and if you don't meet, you don't meet. So any volunteers for that committee? Do we throw everybody's name a hat?
Tom, I'll go on that one.
Okay, Ms. Yinch? And we need two, right?
Two, yes, sir.
I'll volunteer.
And Ms. Jones. All right, so I need a motion to make the, to approve the changes to committee assignments and adjustments in committees.
I assume a second.
Cordell, Mr. Gilli. All right, any discussion on that? Pretty straightforward. Ms. Jones.
Ah.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell. Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine-two-zero. Next up is the budget update, and Ms. Nelson, that is yours.
Okay, so the budget, this is the budget update for August. Um, so far, for, for the month of August, we received four million fifty-three thousand dollars, which put us at nine point three, one percent of our budget. Three point three million of that was state money, um, Ortizah and, um, some other state grants. And then, um, six hundred eighty-nine thousand of that was, um, local. So majority of that was state, state revenue. Um, expenditures, for the month of August, we had our first payroll. So we were, um, August was around four million, four million fifty, four million fifty-four thousand dollars, which put us at ten point five-seven percent of our budget, um, compared to last year to date, ten point eight, so budget's still on track. Um, let me look through here, see if I see anything. Um, nothing really stands out, um, to talk about for this, for the month of August, but if you have questions, I will gladly answer those.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the, uh, the budget, uh, update.
I assume a.
Ms. Jones.
I'll second.
And. Oh, Mr. Cordell, okay.
I'm Mr. Coon, I think, yeah.
Mr. Chair, who did you pick for second?
What's that?
Who, who did you pick for second?
I, you got, uh, Mr. Cordell for second, so. All right, any discussion, questions for April? No? All right, Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
Ah.
Vote aye, that passes nine-two-zero. So that concludes the, the, uh, action items on the agenda. So next up, we have items for discussion and I would like to, let's start, let's do this. Let's start with Mr. Hansert and then we'll go around this way, so we'll do something different for change.
Um, I've got a couple of things. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Showers for the sidewalk in front of the heating facility. That's something that, uh, we've been needing for a while. Uh, my family, we'd like to thank you. My dad especially, my dad came over the other day and looked at it and, uh, uh, something that's very special to us, obviously. But, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, uh, Sherry and Mark Taylor, or Mark and Sherry Taylor. They've donated the landscaping in front of that place for, for twenty years. Every fall, if they donate something, if something died and, uh, you know, that's, uh, been a really dedication from them for the past twenty years. Second, I'd like to ask, uh, this past fall retreat, uh, a year ago, I asked for an organizational chart. I asked Mr. Showers about it, he said we hadn't had one in five years. Uh, said that we would get it, didn't get it. Uh, Mr. Powell come in, uh, as an interim, said we had it in a couple of weeks, we never got it. Now here we are, a year later, still haven't gotten it. Uh, we even talked about it in our, uh, interviews for our superintendent. We asked everybody, you know, same question. So I guess the question is, where's it at?
You know, uh, every day we make choices about what gets prioritized and, um, sometimes things get pushed ahead of those things and, yeah, you were promised it and I intend on carrying out that promise. But sometimes the, our world gets pretty doggone busy and, and, and when you're dealing with people, I understand the importance of an organizational chart, I understand how it can serve and the purposes that it serves, but sometimes the people part gets pushed in front of it. Um, I'll have you one by November.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're, this is drug on and, and it's not none of your fault.
Oh, I understand.
We're, I'm not blaming you in, in the least, but it's just, we was told two or three times as a board, we've all been told that we would, we would have it.
I understand.
And we never got it and, uh, but, uh, again, uh, thank y'all, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I want to say something to this, cause I don't recall saying I would get anything together, uh, on a organization chart. I do remember the organization chart coming up, I remember the situation that came up. Uh, and I actually asked, where did it come from? And I still don't have a copy of the organization chart myself, and I don't have a digital copy of it. Um, but I just want to let you know, if I said that I'm just gonna get it, I normally do what I say I'm gonna do. And I don't recall saying I would get one together for you. Uh, if I did, I, I'm actually gonna go back and look at the, at the video, cause I really don't recall saying I would get it for anybody.
I, you know, and I, you know, and I'm jumping out of turn there, I know it's come up a few times and, you know, if we, whoever does it, if we get it by, by next, by, by the November board meeting, then, then we're good, so.
Ms. Hansert, I appreciate you bringing that topic up. We had discussed organization chart and that is very important for our system, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Yinch?
I actually have nothing for discussion this time.
You don't want to discuss football jerseys?
No, I don't.
Mr. Cordell?
Hmm, I don't guess I do tonight.
Mr. Gilli?
After the first agenda item tonight, I don't, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Coon?
Uh, I'd just, uh, like to thank all the principals that are here tonight. It's good to, to see the large crowd that we have, uh, hope y'all can make it to every board meeting. Nice for y'all to represent your schools, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Matthews?
I want to echo what Mr. Coon just said, I always forget to say that. But it is very much appreciated that you care enough to give your evening up to come and be with us. Um, the only few things that I have are really just kind of following up on some things that I, myself, more like reminders for myself. Um, um, so I had a note in my phone to remind me back in the spring, um, in salary and compensation committee meetings, I'm no longer a part of that committee, but we did talk about the possibility of breaking out the pay scales. I'm sure a lot of people remember that. And I know that the issue with that was timing, that we didn't have time to do that. Um, and so I guess I was just gonna ask, like, where are we on that? Are we still gonna break those out or? I, I just want to make sure that we're bringing it up in plenty of time, that we're not, last year I felt like, you know, we thought it maybe was too late to do it before we could get our budget over to the county commission. So I'm just trying to stay ahead of the game and not forget that we talked about breaking those pay scales, uh, so.
Just, uh, point of information, the committee advisor is Mr. Hargrove and then
Okay.
Mr. Hansert, Ms. Yinch, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Coon are on that committee.
Perfect, so we'll let y'all take that, that was just a, a note to myself. Um, another thing that I wanted to bring up is a while back, not long after school started, I was contacted by a, an employee with Coffee County Probation at the DA's office about, um, getting one of our school, um, organizations, clubs, team, however you want to do it, or a school, uh, together for a, a community service project to build and create hygiene bags. And, um, I had sent that out to one group, but there really was not much interest. And I don't know if that group already had some community service projects they were committed to. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there, that if we do have a group in any of our schools that would be interested, whether it's, you know, I don't want to say any names or put anybody on the spot, but any organization club that's looking for a community service project to do, um, they would very much appreciate the support. Um, I think they're just wanting basic hygiene supplies for their clients that they work with. Um, it's a really good thing. Uh, and so I just, i- if, if we have any organizations, clubs, groups, teams that would like to do that, I can give you the information on who to contact at Coffee County Probation. So I just wanted to mention that so that I didn't forget it. And then one more thing, I was gonna follow up with you, Mr. Hargrove, on the fundraiser data that we talked about at the retreat that you were gonna get us.
Well, I've broken it down, I don't have the amount.
Okay.
Uh, but what, who do you think our largest fundraiser is?
Uh.
What school?
What school? I, I don't know, all, all we.
Obviously, the, the, the high school.
Yeah, yeah, all, all I was, we were asking for was that everybody, every school give you.
Yes, they did.
The, okay.
And I can share some of those numbers, I'll do it via the weekly email.
Yep, that'd be great.
Some of the numbers, you'd be surprised, I was surprised, very much so.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we keep that on our radar.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing. I want to thank New Union Elementary for having me out, uh, last week. They, uh, third grade classroom had, uh, did speeches, um, and Ms. Jonas Sizemore was there and Ms. Michelle Howe and Thomas Ballard. And they, the third graders did speeches for us and it was just, it was precious. Um, they did such a great job and I could tell that they were coached up and trained up by Amanda McCain. Um, and they can, that, we came in and we pretended that we, um, did not believe that voting was important in elections. And those kids got up, each of them, and gave a speech in front of the whole class and to us adults and convinced us and persuaded us that voting is important and that we should do it. So it was just, it was an awesome experience, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for having me. It was very enjoyable.
And Holly didn't mention that she brought treats for all the kids too, so. Which they really appreciate.
Look at candy corn. It was fall break.
Ms. Hodge?
This is gonna shock you, Tom, but I don't have anything to say today.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, right? I sat here and I tried to think of something and it, none of it all.
She's busy designing our shirts for the, uh, for the convention, so.
But you all hate it, but that's okay, cause I paid it all the way that y'all made too, so we're.
That's okay, you're still volunteering.
Pass it down.
Okay. All right, Ms. Jones?
Okay, I want to ask Ms. Gilli something. Can you make this mascot the Tennessee walking horse? Instead of the raccoon? No, I'm kidding. Okay, um, the only thing that I wanted to talk about was, I know, uh, one of, Mr. Hargrove's performance goals is the bus rep, is the bus discipline.
Yes, ma'am, and we've shared those.
Decreasing, and you're, and I, and you're sharing that with us every.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Melissa is a great help and we try to get that out monthly.
Very enlightening.
Yes, ma'am.
And I hope all the board members are printing this off and looking like Holly brought up earlier and how you can interact with me if you want, but I just, I looked at it and I was, I know a bus driver has a, such a hard job to begin with, and then when you see some of the things that these children are doing on the buses, I don't know how they can even drive. But, um, I thought it would be good to just look and see what schools are, are, you know, having so many bus reports and some aren't, because that's something we need to look at and maybe that school can, maybe if they can come up with some kind of incentives, because I don't know if they've actually realized how many bus reports that are going out from their school.
And it's not just nitpicky stuff, the violations are terrible, in my opinion. They are so, um, concerning that when I read that long bus conduct report, I don't sleep that night. It is just very disheartening, I, and I don't, I'm not saying it's any of our school's fault or anything, it's a society problem. And we are, reading that report, like Ms. John said, has been so eye-opening. My heart goes out to everybody in the transportation department, well, everybody in the schools. I just didn't realize that we had that many serious discipline issues. It's.
Right, and it's.
Concerning.
And maybe sometimes that happens is because you don't real, you know, you get a report today, maybe the next day, but when you look at it, for instance, uh, Coffee County Middle School had sixty-seven, Hillsborough had twenty, Deerfield had twenty, Coffee County Raider Academy had eleven, Coffee County Central High, which you would think would, only had six. Uh, North Coffee had four, uh, East Coffee had three, Hickerson had one, Call Center had one, and New Union has zero. So not, not trying to call out any schools, but this is good information to look at. If you've got zero, then you want to keep it that way. And, and if you've got more than that, then something needs to change as far as, if whether, I don't know, I don't know, it's just the, the, the kids need to be talked to and, and maybe we give too many incentives for peo- for kids to be good, but it's gotta be looked at because it's just a, it, it's not appropriate for, for the things that they're doing on, on that bus and, uh, on a lot of the buses and so it's, it, to me, that's just something that hopefully we can improve upon and that's, you know, that's one of Mr. Hargrove's performance goals and he's doing what we ask by getting us these reports because, uh, if you don't know what's going on, nobody's gonna address it, so.
Yeah, thank you for providing that.
Absolutely.
It's really opened my eyes.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a whole new respect for anybody in education, just after. I have a whole new respect for anybody in education just after reading that. That's not counting what's going on in school buildings.
And I think it would be good for the principals to get the same reports that we get because it would be really eye-opening to them to realize, okay, I need to address this in some way. Or we're doing great. We need to keep it up. You know, make sure our kids know that we appreciate them not getting all these reports sent to us.
Thank you, Ms. Tarpitow.
Uh, one thing to throw on that when I was talking about the policy earlier. It's al- already in our policy. The way we left that meeting was we needed to reiterate that to our principals and building level that transportation ultimately has to say.
Yes.
Okay.
The principal can't override transportation and put a child back on the bus.
And the- The principal can't.
And the disciplinary action-
Transportation has the final say. That's what the policy says.
And disciplinary action is important, but it's also important that we do things to prevent this.
Yeah.
You know, that's- that's our mission, is to not have these to begin with. I know you're gonna have some, but, uh, anyway, that's just very opening.
Holly brought up the consistency too. We gotta be consistent.
Right.
Just, yeah, just because something happened on the bus doesn't mean that they're not subject to the same discipline of something that happens in the classroom.
And if they're gonna act this way on a bus, then they can do that in school too, and that-
And they will.
Holly, thank you for bringing that up.
My pleasure. And I want to, uh, have a shout out to Mr. To Doc- to, uh, Dr. Anderson. This is good. And, uh, I mean, I know that we can, that the science and social studies, really over fifty percent, and that's great. Hopefully, we'll get over fifty for all of them before long.
I guess that leaves me, and I guess your plate just got that much bigger, right? I'm wired. But I'll- I'll, I don't have too much to say, but I do want to reiterate what Holly said about, you know, the great time we had at- out at New Union. And, uh, what, uh, Ms. McCain is doing out there with the kids was- was pretty awesome. So I enjoyed that, and it was- it was definitely positive, you know. I- I encourage board members to get out to the schools a lot more often because that's where the rubber meets the road and the- and the effects of our policies are- are seen out there just, you know, with the kids and stuff. So that's- that's really awesome. We got a lot of things to work on, but- but, uh, you know, it's so much fun to go out and see what- what's going on. I still think I owe something to- to Michelle over at, uh, at Hickerson too. So she's working to get me in the schedule over there, but that's- that's all good. I like, I enjoy doing that, so. And that's- that's all we have for discussion. So did we have any committees, committees in the last- since the last meeting? I don't think so.
We- we haven't. We're close to requesting a policy committee.
Okay. And we have-
We have an after-school committee meeting at four o'clock on October the sixteenth.
Okay.
And we're fixing to start scheduling some more on through there, so.
Okay. So we're gonna have an innovation committee and, yeah, so, okay, so.
Everybody's shoesizes, send to me, like, as soon as you can, about tomorrow, I think. And what shirt you want? Because I've got, I mean, we only have a couple weeks of- of sessions, so.
Get rocking and rolling on that, so. All right, student ambassador reports, the moment you've been waiting for. You've been waiting for this moment, right? Okay. Okay, can we bring the microphone up front here for him, so? Yeah, we- we make you get up and read this so everybody can see you. And before you launch in, give it- give, tell us your name, but- but a little bit about your- your background and, you know, where you're hoping to go after- after high school and all that stuff too, so.
Um, I'm Leila Cooley. Uh, I'm a historian for SGA, the Student Government Association, at the high school. Um, I'm co-vice president of FBLA also at the high school. I'm also editor of the yearbook at high school. I do a lot, and I hope to go to University of Tennessee Knoxville.
All right.
Um, I'll start off with, uh, oh, no, oh, sorry, sorry.
Um, I'm Carly Freeman, and I'm the student body president at the high school. I'm also involved in cross-country and track and field as well as FBLA, DECA, and Refuge Three-O-Five. And hopefully, I'll be attending Western Kentucky after high school to get my speech-language pathology degree.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and start off with the sports. So for golf, boys and girls finished really strong. We were named district champions for golf. Um, for our girls, Caroline Matthews, um, won individual district tournament champion. And boys, Landon Col- Landon Collins com- competed in the state tournament. Um, for girls soccer, the season ended over fall break. Um, Kayla Deanda and Abby Walker got all district as well. And for cross-country, their season is not over just yet. They have a meet on Wednesday at Community and also have a meet in- on Saturday at Huntsville. And volleyball also ended their season over fall break. Um, they finished third in the district. And Morgan Spears, Alyssa Goon, and Danny Hills named all district. And, um, Ginsley Nogdula and Haley Harris named all ter- all tournament. And for football, their season is not over just yet. Their senior night is this Friday, and we play Summit.
And then for our clubs, we had our CTSO night on September thirtieth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And we had about twenty different organizations participate in that. We'd like to thank all the members of the community that showed up to learn about and provide opportunities for organizations. And then Hosa has a blood drive at First Baptist on the sixteenth. And FFA has a nursery, landscape, and horticulture competition tomorrow. Beta has a murder mystery dinner this Saturday. You can buy tickets and go eat dinner, and they have like a show with it. FBLA and DECA will be attending the Titans Learning Lab on the twenty-eighth of this month. And as well, multiple clubs will be attending the One Day of Hope at the fairgrounds for the community. And then the theater production for the fall is The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, and that will be coming soon. And as far as SGA, we had a successful Game On themed homecoming and Swedish Night themed dance last month. And this year, we also started sending out birthday cards each month to every student in the school. That way, each student can feel recognized at least once during our school year. And then our Renaissance Rally is coming up this Friday. The different ways that students can earn cards is through having all As for the red card, having all As or Bs for the black card, um, improving their semester GPA by point five or more, or maintaining a four-point-oh for a silver card, and then no absence, tardies, checkouts, or discipline referrals for a white card. And our Renaissance Rally will just be having games outside, like cornhole, chalk, and things like that. So that's all we have.
All right, thank you very- any questions for our student ambassadors?
I think it's really, really cool that you're sending out birthday cards to everybody. I love that. That's really nice.
You guys did great. Thank you. Thank you for bringing them.
Mr. Cordell? Oh, okay. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have director's report.
I'll be brief. A shout-out, raider shout-out to Ms. Holland Clark. If you walk around our, um, our administrative building, you see, uh, pictures, you see, uh, pictures of athletics, you see pictures of children in class, CTE class, children on the playground. Uh, that's why we do what we do. And Holland has done a great job of, uh, getting those things framed and placed up on the wall. Just kind of a kind reminder when we walk around and see those young faces and our kids doing the great things that they do every day, why we do what we do. Thank you. Um, other than that, we're right off fall break, and we are ready raider- raider-ready for a great second quarter. So I'll be brief.
So does the board need to have an accident item for the next agenda on your facial hair? So. Just wondering, yeah? How far our purview goes, yeah? Mr. Shores, capital project.
Lot of white in it.
Okay, with the chemical projects, we have the window laminate phase two is finished up. Uh, we will be going into a phase three before long, but we- we lack very small amounts. And from here on out, there's gonna be things that we'll be doing that's gonna create us having to bring them back in, uh, such as changing outdoors so that we- we get glass up the same as everything else throughout the building, so. Uh, but phase two is finished up with the laminate. Uh, the high school, um, the doors and the hallway architectural, uh, designs. Uh, we're hoping to start looking at putting that out to- to bid, starting to talk about that, uh, hopefully before the end of this school year, or school year, sorry, by the end of this calendar year. Um, the bleacher modifications at the high school, uh, the- the handrails, the widening of the bleachers and the mid-steps have all been included and completed last week, so those are done. Uh, when you start going to the athletic events, you'll see the- the changes there with- with that part. Uh, moving on down, we have several projects that's gonna be coming up. And actually, some of these that were upcoming projects got finished last week. So they're in the upcoming projects, but they actually were, this form or document was- was done beforehand, uh, such as the concrete work at the- the football stadium, uh, the- the ramp, if you know anything about the ramp going down underneath the home side bleachers. Then also the locker rooms coming out on the backside. Uh, we're adding concrete in those areas. Uh, the quarterback club, I believe it was, got the concrete donated. Then the system's taking care of the, um, the- the labor, getting all taken care of. And that's being done tomorrow. Uh, sidewalks at the high school that Mr. Hanser talked about just a little bit. There was sidewalks at the hitting facility, baseball, but also coming from that area going across, giving the students an area to walk that's not in the- the wet grass. And we're getting ready to get into wet season, so, uh, that's gonna be a big help. As well as, there's a- a sidewalk coming from a teacher parking lot on the backside. So there- there was more than just the one part, and- and those are, they got completed last week, so they are finished. Uh, gym scuffing coats at some of our schools, that was taken care of. And we're doing, with elementary, we're looking at trying to do that every two years to keep those up, and- and they've turned out really nice. Um, the- the doors at New Union, uh, that's in process. Uh, still have a way to go with it. And then garage doors at the high school CTE. And we're doing one side, and then we'll be looking at the other side later on. And it's just that the doors are wore out. So we're- we're upgrading in that area. And I think that's pretty much everything on here that needs to be talked about. If you have any questions, please ask.
I- I know Jennifer brought up the bathrooms at the, uh, football stadium, so.
Yes, uh, she did. And actually looked at them, and we are doing some work there as well, uh, waiting till all the football games are- are finished. Uh, you're not able to go in and do some work because there- there was some things that needs to be cleaned up and- and made a little nicer. Uh, we've got petitions. That's already been ordered. They- they're actually in hold right now. Uh, so we're getting ready to go in and do some work there that's gonna take care of some things because they- they did need to be a little bit. Uh, so TLC put to them, I guess you could say.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't know pain until you have to hold a child over something they're not supposed to touch. I know you've probably done it. It is not a good thing.
Mr. Shores, is the laminate on all the schools in the for yours?
Laminate is on all the for yours in the schools, yes. Laminate is.
On the- on the window panes?
Yes, laminate is.
I thought about in New Union, last time I was there.
Laminate is-
I mean, the- the screen.
Lam- laminate's different than vinyl.
Okay.
Uh, the- the laminate is on all the windows at the for yours. That's protective coating that was put on at the schools. Uh, that is a shatter resistance, uh, material. Now, the- the vinyl, all the schools that had requested the vinyl on the s- on the front entrances do have the front entrances, uh, finished. So yes, they are finished in that sense. Uh, we do have one school since then, which is New Union, that has requested to put the vinyl on the front of theirs. And, uh, I explained to the- the principal at that school that, uh, we would be doing that to phase three. So when we get hit phase three-
So they won't have to pay, we'll be, they're- they're not gonna have to pay for it.
No, we're- we're taking care of it.
Good. Okay, I- I wanted to ask one other thing too. I know in the past, um, everybody said, there's nothing we can do with the- with TDOT, putting a traffic light out there at New Union. But I was wondering, and this is something, Mr. Hargrove, you might consider or see. As a board, could we have a resolution or something to send to TDOT? Because that is, there's a traffic light needed out there badly. And, uh, not just during, uh, you know, pickup and- and when they're leaving the ki- it's all the time, except on the weekends, maybe on a Sunday, you can pull out without getting hit by someone about to get hit. Because people, it's a four-way, it's not a four-way stop, but it's a four-way. And some people coming off of Ridney Road sit there. They don't realize they got the- the right-of-way to turn right, and they'll just sit there, and then finally, people will pull out in front. So one of these days, somebody's gonna have a bad accident there because it's not, you know, it's not gonna get any better. And I just thought, maybe if- if, as a board, we sent that to TDOT and say, please come and see this because I, you know.
You might need to do a study on it.
Yeah. And-
Tennessee Highway.
At least get some more attention to it because I think at one time, there was some attention to it, and it's gone away. Because I know they did do, they did do something at Hillsborough, didn't they? At the traffic light there, there, did they miss-
The caution line.
They did. It's county. That's county. They're-
On Highway forty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Really? How did they get a traffic light? How did the county put up a traffic light? I was told that the county-
I did a study on that too, but fifty-three is a state road.
Forty-one is a state road too.
Yeah, but when you, they used that, the road going to Viola, it's a- it's a county road.
Well, we could, well, then it's two county roads coming into fifty-three, so there you go. Who do we talk to?
Hillsborough, Viola is one-twenty-seven. It's a county road.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
I think it's a state road.
I think it's a state road too.
State route one-twenty-seven and state, US forty-one, actually, is still a state.
So TDOT didn't put the traffic light up at Hillsborough?
I don't, I don't think so.
I think that's what the county mayor did when it was all over the news and stuff.
Oh, I thought that'd been up there on time.
And they come to some kind of-
Well, we, maybe we need to take a resolution to the mayor.
Right there at the, yeah.
That's put in probably five years ago.
And then they put in a four-way stop sign and two-eighty and fifty-three and it's, what?
Didn't the county put that out there though? There were a lot of Hillsborough.
Uh, I- I, the county mayor was out there. They really were talking about it. I don't think they put anything out there though. I think they were just sort of talking about it.
You're doing a study on it. You're doing a study on it, is what they're doing.
There was TDOT people, and there was, the mayor was out there, and the sheriff.
They're doing a study.
Yeah.
Well, then maybe we need to request the mayor to do a study out there because i- it's a lot of traffic. It's more so than- than normal.
Especially since they expanded Richland Hills and all that on that side of Ridney Road. It's a real mess in the morning. I avoid it.
Well, people are, what people are doing, they're going the backroads and trying to pull out.
They are, and that's dangerous too.
Because they're not wide enough to pass, you know, on some of those backroads.
We've got plenty of policemen sitting around waiting for somebody to go five over, so. Maybe they could help us.
Yeah, maybe. Any more questions for Mr. Shores? Mr. Hanser had, oh. Anybody down there? Oh. You're just chatting.
I'm just chatting, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hanser had one more thing.
I'd be remorse, I've had several requests to make this, uh, to Mr. Hargrove, and, uh, Mr. Parson was talking about it earlier, of girls' flag football.